Welcome to the Little Rock Planning Commission, August 14, 2025. We're gonna go ahead and get started. We have a full house today, ladies and gentlemen. So with that said, let's go ahead and call this meeting to order and let's get a roll call vote to determine the quorum. All right, excuse me everyone. This is the roll call vote for the August 14, 2025 Little Rock Planning Commission meeting. Roll call vote, Commissioner Brown?
Here.
Bernard?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hodges?
Here.
Person?
Here.
McDonald? Russell?
Present.
Samad? Trimble?
Present.
Baxter?
Present.
Vickers?
Present.
We have a quorum. All right, thank you. All right, moving right along here. I'm sure that all the commissioners got a chance to review the minutes. If there's not any questions, I would love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes as drafted.
Second.
Now we have a motion in a second. For approval of the minutes, can I get a roll call vote for that, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald? Person?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad? Trimble?
Yes.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Minutes are approved. All right, great. Before we move to the consent agenda reading, I just wanted to say at the end of the meeting, and this pertaining to the board, we will have just for new business and to discuss the updating of the policy. And to look at it or exploring options to create a subcommittee to review that. So it's kind of more of a new business for the commissioners. All right? So with that being said, we're gonna move right along for the reading of the consent agenda. Monty, if you will.
Following is the consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission meeting of August 14, 2025. First, we have three items that are gonna be withdrawn or deferred. Item two, file number Z-10,001,15 is being deferred to the November 13th agenda at the request of the applicant. Item six, Z-4,001-D is being withdrawn at the request of the applicant. And item 14, Z-8911-B is being deferred to the November 13th agenda at the request of the applicant. Next are the items on consent approval. Item number one, Z-6978-A Equipment Share CUP 7,600 Block of Fluid Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item three, S-1,002-C Lot 3R, 4R, Block 27, John Barrow Edition Replat immediately south of 3,400 Catherine Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested replat subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number four, S-1261-M Kenwood Estates Phase 6 Revised Preliminary Platte East End of Kenwood Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the revised preliminary platte subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item five, S-1844-G Copper Run Phases 7 and 8 Preliminary Platte South End of Copper Drive, South of Pride Valley Road. Staff recommends approval of the preliminary platte subject to compliance with comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item seven, Z-6957-P Minorred Conditional Use Permit 5,100 Tally Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item eight, Z-10,00184 Apex Professional Construction Duplex Conditional Use Permit 8,13 Rice Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item nine, Z-10,00185 Skyline Equity Group Duplex CUP Immediately south of 1412 South Pine Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 10, Z-10,00186 Elite Equity 10 Duplex Conditional Use Permit Southwest Corner of West 18th Street and Harrison Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 11, Z-10,00187 Brooks Duplex Conditional Use Permit Immediately west of 3,105 West 11th Street. Staff recommends approval of the CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 12 is being moved to the regular agenda for discussion. Item 13, Z-5099-J Northwest Territory Lots 9F through 9J PCD and Preliminary Platte North Side of Cantrell Road, approximately 800 feet west of Chanel Parkway. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD and preliminary platte subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 16, Z-10,00173 Mays Harris PDR 3,201 West 12th Street. Staff recommends approval of the PDR subject to the compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 18, 10,00181 Orndorf Number 2 PDR Southwest Corner of East 15th and Hanger Streets. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR zoning subject to compliance with comments and conditions outlined in paragraph D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 19, Z-10,00182 Orndorf Number 3 PDR Immediately north of 1508 Hanger Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 20, Z-10,00183 Orndorf Number 4 PDR Immediately north of 1614 College Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDR subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And item 21, An Ordinance to Repeal the City of Little Rock's Planning Jurisdiction in Unincorporated Areas. Staff recommends approval of the ordinance. That concludes the consent agenda.
Thank you, Monty. If we don't have any questions from any of the commissioners, I would love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda as read, subject to staff's analysis, conditions, and comments.
Second.
Have a motion in a second. May I get a roll call vote, please? Yes, sir. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Consent agenda has been approved. Thank you. All right, so if your item was on the consent agenda, you're... We would love for you to stay, but you're more than welcome to leave at this particular time. And while we give you just a minute to depart, we have an item, item number 12 was moved over to the regular agenda. So if you're here for that item, definitely you will need to stay here on that, that's Z-10188, The Gardens, for a conditional use permit. And for the regular agenda, just for the record, we're moving that to the regular agenda, and that will be the first item on the regular agenda. And then the other would go in chronological order, item number 15 and 17. So it will be 12, 15, and 17. Also, I want to add that we actually have our full board here. But we have a couple of commissioners that have to leave a little early due to conflict of schedules. So we're gonna try to move along accordingly, and we want to respect everybody's time here, definitely. So with that being said, item number 12 up, and since we have several cards for this particular item, there's a total of 20 minutes, whether if you're support or in opposition. So if there's 20 cards up there, then essentially you have up to 20 minutes, which it would give fair time of one minute per card. Or if you have a representative that will be representing the full group that would like to, you know, have more time, or a lot more time to that particular person, then you can, okay? So we just want to be mindful of that as well. So moving right along, is the applicant for item number 12, Z-10188, present? Present. While you're making your way up here to the podium, we will have the reading.
Item 12, File Number Z-10,00188. This is The Gardens Conditional Use Permit 9621 Tall Timber Boulevard. The applicant is requesting a conditional use permit to allow the existing developed property to be utilized as a mental health and therapeutic community facility. The facility will operate 24 hours a day, 7 days a week. The Gardens is a therapeutic community with current facilities in Sherwood and Texarkana. The Gardens proposes to occupy the existing developed property with a living facility for 16 individuals. There will be up to eight staff or caregivers at any given time. The Gardens provides care for adults diagnosed with a serious mental illness or intellectual disorder. The site is located on the east side of Stagecoach Road and contains an existing one-story building. The building was previously occupied by the Bible Doctrine Church of Little Rock. Properties surrounding the site contain a mixture of zoning and uses. Two driveways extend south from Tall Timber Boulevard, providing access to the property. The western drive will serve as the primary ingress egress. The applicant notes that the easternmost driveway from Tall Timber Boulevard, the driveways closest to the single-family neighborhood will be gated and only used for emergency access. The existing building is 11,918 square feet in area. The applicant intends to remodel the building. The existing parking lot located on the north side of the building provides ample parking for staff and visitors. Staff feels the parking is sufficient to serve the proposed use. The applicant notes that transportation is provided to all clients, and they will not be roaming the streets and neighborhood. Staff is supportive of the requested CUP. Staff feels the applicant's proposed reuse of the developed sites is an appropriate use for this location. The property is over seven acres in area and will be occupied by only 16 residents. The proposed facility should prove to be a very quiet and low-traffic use. The property is located along a principal arterial roadway, State Highway 70. The only daily vehicle or access will be from the westernmost drive near the intersection. The majority of the property is undeveloped and tree-covered. There is an existing land use buffer along the east property line, ranging in width from 100 feet to 200 feet. In staff's opinion, the proposed use will have no adverse impact on the surrounding properties. And staff recommends approval of the requested CUP subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report, and the following condition. The conditional use permit will be for The Gardens facility and operators only. If The Gardens ceases use and vacates the property, the conditional use permit will become null and void and will not be transferred to another user.
Thank you for the reading, Monty. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Yes, sir. Joe White. Joe White.
All right, Mr. White. So before you get started, you're more welcome to present your presentation on this item. Or if you like, we do have a host of cards in opposition. You can defer your time now and come back up afterwards, or you can speak now. Your choice.
We'd like to do a short. We've got a video we'd like to show you.
Sure.
And then we'd like to reserve the rest of our time.
Sure.
We've got a group here that can answer questions, so why don't I sit down and just play the video? Is that good?
Yeah. Well, and Mr. Chairman, while we're queuing that up, just real quick, because I have gotten a couple of questions on this. I just, you know, to make sure we're all on the same page. You know, with other types of applications, I have a thing I read, that's this is not a group home application, it's not a special use permit. But just so everyone, you know, is keeping this in mind, same for the folks that are here for public comment. We cannot deny this based on what the proposed... Basically because it serves a disabled population, that can't be the basis for it. So I just want to make sure that we all have that in mind moving forward.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, let's start the video.
...struggled with some kind of mental crisis. It's not us and them, it's we. And so when Ed told me about Arkansas and that our State Department wanting to get behind communities like The Gardens, I said, "Count me in." The Gardens is a community support system provider. It's a therapeutic community for people who have some type of mental health condition. It's our friends, it's our family, it's our kids, it's our moms, our dads. It's people who were in college, it's people who are going back to get their GED, you know, it's people who are looking for jobs. We believe that everybody has individual rights. It's our mission to help support whatever life you want to lead.
We push everybody to realize that we all struggle with something. So go about each day being the best person that you can be.
One in 30 new births in the United States, those babies are born with autism. And those babies are going to be our children, they're gonna be our grandchildren, our nieces and nephews. And we have got to have something in place to support them.
We're gonna look out for one another, we're gonna be there for one another. We're always keeping a close eye on everything, making sure the neighborhood is safe, it's guarded.
This is what you can expect. We sign in, we communicate, the staff here and the people that live here, we want it to be safe. You know, we gather each day inside this community, and we talk about our day. We want to know our next-door neighbors, we want y'all to know us.
Keeping that rapport about everyone that's in the neighborhood about what's going on.
We don't add to traffic because, you know, most of our folks still need some assistance and support. So it's not like we've got 16, you know, cars out front with lots of coming and going. We're not a drug and alcohol detox center. In order to get screened and become a tenant here, is we do very thorough criminal background checks. We want to look out for you, we want you to look out for us.
We're just here to just look out for one another and make sure everything is okay and safe.
We want to make the community more beautiful. You know, we like flowers, we have palm trees in pots, we have ferns that are there. We really want to be an addition to the community, we want it to be beautiful. We offer employment opportunities for folks who live in the area. We want volunteers in here. We have people from different churches that come in and volunteer. I think we add an enrichment to communities. We are not an island and we're not a silo.
Right now, you want to be a part of this. You're impacting so many lives, but you're challenging not only the people here, you're challenging yourself to be better, to help motivate them to live a more healthy and a positive lifestyle. Each person has their own room, which is equipped with their own bed, dresser, computer desk and chair. They have their own TV.
In the mornings, folks will get up, some will eat early breakfast, some will eat late breakfast. They'll help clean the community. We know now the mind-body connection between good health, good nutrition. So we really try to have a well-balanced breakfast, lunch, and dinner.
You socialize with one another like a family, you talk about what's gonna go on that day and what's planned. Then around 9:30 or so, we have group therapy.
Some people will have an individual session with the counselor or the social worker that's on premises. Some will go to work, some will get in the books and go to school. We have great activities, leadership, we go to concerts, we go to parks.
We'll go have dinner, and we'll socialize, and we'll talk about the day. Typical day is just like a normal family life.
If we invest in our people, problems can be prevented. Folks that come in and live in our communities, it keeps them out of the hospital. And hospitals are not places to live, communities are places to live.
Most people that struggle with mental health, they feel like they have no one they can go to to help them overcome it.
And overcoming that stigma of people that have some kind of brain condition, whether it's autism, if it's a processing problem, or if it is a, you know, a chemical imbalance, I think we should talk about it. We have got a society of people, just like you and I, that struggle with this.
It's an internal thing, it's that stigma that it's not okay to have something mentally wrong with you.
And there shouldn't be shame associated with it. Well, I like to say what my favorite poet Maya Angelou says is, "We did then what we knew then. When we knew better, we did better." If we can prevent something from happening, the outcomes are better all around.
It's kind of our job here at The Gardens to let you know that it's okay to have something wrong. We're here for you.
I think we'll just pause and listen to the neighbors and their concerns and then respond.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, so we have a number of cards here, so I'm gonna call them here in order as I have them. The first, and if you want to defer your time, you can just stand up, raise your hand, and say that you want to defer your time. If you have a general speaker, or you want a lot more time to someone else who fit out the green card. The first card is David Wright. And if you need to adjust the microphone, you can.
Hello, I'm David Wright, I'm pastor of Aniak Missionary Baptist Church. And I come here on behalf of the people that you see behind me. It's not that we're opposed to getting mental, those that have mental health assistance, and the problem is, we have a detox center that's right next door that's caused a problem in the neighborhood. And that's the sad situation to have. If this had been the organization that came first, I don't think you'd have a problem. But because of that, it's caused the neighborhood to say no. And they've come to me, we've had many meetings, and they've discussed this, and it's just not a good fit right now. This detox center does have some issues. I've had to call the director there, because we've had people come over to our church wanting to drive, wanting to call somebody, get a drive. And so it's just not a good fit right now in the community. They've had many issues with that center. And we're afraid, and the people here are afraid, that they're gonna have issues with their neighbor next door. And so I don't think it's a good fit for the community. It's nothing against what they're doing, I think they're doing a wonderful service. I have adult autistic family in mine, and also children, and I think that it's needed. But yet, it's just not a good fit for the community that we have around us. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Next card is Denise White.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Feel free to adjust the microphone, Mrs. White.
I will. Okay. My name is Denise White. I am a mortgage loan officer with Bank OZK. I'm also a resident of Pecan Lake. I'm here in opposition of the facility. Number one, as the pastor stated, we have a lot of problems with that detox. There are ambulances running day and night. You can barely sleep some nights because somebody's OD'd. I'm also a volunteer with the Little Rock Regional Chamber. And recently, we took out members, their new plaques. I went to the detox place to deliver theirs, and one of the patients let me in the facility. There was nobody up there in front. So I feel like they're doing good work, but it's not something for a residential area. And our residential area is predominantly African-American. As a loan officer, what they're putting up there along with the detox is going to devalue our homes. Because when you get ready to say, "Oh, how many people gonna want to live next to a detox center and a facility where you're dealing with people with disabilities?" And disabilities where, you know, you don't know what it entails as far as a safety issue. I know they say that, you know, they haven't had any problems, but that's why they call them accidents. Because it's something that you hadn't planned. And everybody makes a mistake. I think it's something that we don't want our children exposed to. You know, it's bad enough they're exposed to the detox place. Because when those people want to leave, they just open the door and let them out, and they're roaming. just open the door and let them out, and they're roaming around our neighborhood. And our children see that, and that's not a good look, not at all. And, you know, I feel like more and more, the city is trying to push businesses in our residential area, taking down our property values and preventing us from having properties sell. The house next door to me has been on the market now for more than six months. I've watched realtors come and go, taking people over there to look at it. Now, are they not buying it because something is wrong with the house? I doubt that, because the people that live there took very good care of their property. Or is it because they're in close proximity to a detox center or in another facility that's going to come in with patients? Because people talk and people hear what's going to move into the neighborhood. So, you know, I feel like we need to have somebody on our side. As a predominantly African-American neighborhood, we need somebody to look and say, what about our property values? What about our children? What about our neighborhood? That, I understand what they're doing, but to me, that is something that should be in a either business area or outside the city, where you can have more confined area for your patients and more places for them to go out and sit with their families and visits and all that. It's not for a residential area, not at all. So that is my opposition to it, is that I ask that you think about us as a neighborhood, and you think about our property values and what effect this will have on it, and the safety of not only our children, but the people in our neighborhood, because we've been there a long time. Myself, I've been there over twenty years, and, you know, as older people, you know, I want to feel safe in my home, you know, and right now I don't, because of the detox place, because I know they're walking around, and I worry about that. So I ask that you consider that information and not give them access to that old senior care business that was up there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. White. Next card is William Ellis.
My name's William Ellis, my address is 5110 Stagecoach Road, I'm directly across the street. I could throw a rock and hit this property. I lived on this property for forty-five years where I'm at, so I know Stagecoach pretty well. The detox, as you've heard from these two speakers that very well summed up what we're fighting here today, is so true. The detox should have never been approved, this board should never approve that detox center. I don't care the beautiful name of Haven on it, or if it's, you know, The Gardens or whatever, you can't put lipstick on it and change it. The detox center is bad. Sirens, there was nursing home there for several years before. There's been more sirens, it's not just ambulances, it's the fire truck, the ambulance and the police car. All three of these vehicles will pull up, full sirens, full lights, in front of this place, the gates are locked, you can't get in. All this is going on two o'clock in the morning, and it's nonstop. It's terrible. The ambulances and activity out there is by far three or four times more than what this nursing home had when it was there. And as these folks are saying, I'm handing water out to people walking down the street up against my driveway, they need a drink, they just, they need help. So this is bad, this is a very wonderful historical area out here. The first brick home west Mississippi is out here on Stagecoach Road, just a few blocks down from this. So this area does not need to be dumped on anymore than it's been dumped on before. Do the right thing this time, please, do not approve this. This detox should have not happened, and all we're going to do is add more to the issues on this street, on this beautiful area. This is a southwest trail, the Trail of Tears, it does not need to be dumped on as it is up now. Thank you.
Next card, Ed Bolington.
My box bother me. Hi, Ed Bolington, I've lived in Pecan Lake for about forty-five years, my wife and I raised our daughter, and our granddaughter now calls it home for about twenty years. Like the preacher said, we're not against these kind of programs, I have friends, family and non-family friends who need these kind of programs. I'm concerned about density. We have, detox has forty-plus patients there, forty-plus, and this is proposing to have sixteen, that would be fifty-six people there with mental health and drug problems in a neighborhood. They're contiguous to each other, they're contiguous to my neighbors over here. So I, we got the impression when they came out and talked to us, it's a done deal, if it is a done deal, which I hope it's not, but if it is, I like a couple of things on it, one of them is that they don't have any more than sixteen patients, that cap it at sixteen, so they can't add, and secondly, that they don't add buildings, space, they use that existing building, if you approve it, I hope you don't approve it, but if you do. The third one I had there, and you've already got covered, which is if they don't, if they move out, then it has to be completely rezoned, so that's a good thing. They mentioned problems out there, from January of 2024 to June of 2025, they've had a hundred and twenty nine-one calls out there for things like dead body, disturbances, breakage and entering, harassment, overdose, things like that. So I think it doesn't belong there, you know, when they move into apartments, they're kind of like rabbits, they just keep popping up everywhere. So I don't want that to be the case out there, you got detox here and one across the street where there's another church that might come up, or other places, so thank you.
Thank you. Bernard Mitchell.
Thank you, my name is Bernard Mitchell, I'm a forty-year-plus resident of Pecan Lake, I oppose this recommendation. I've felt unfortunate of having two neighbors and right behind me and right to the right of me, both have bipolar schizophrenia family members. I've witnessed at two locations, at least two times, where the police and the ambulance had to come and physically remove these people from the residence. They were violent, they attacked their family members, and right now, I am sympathetic for the mentally ill, but at this point, I don't feel like that this is a good fit for our neighborhood. I only live one minute walking distance from this property. Thank you.
Thank you. Gail Long.
Good afternoon. I am Gail Long, and I've lived in the Tall Timber community roughly twenty years, and I'm just going to piggyback off everybody else you've heard that live in that neighborhood, safety. I am a retired Plasky County Sheriff's Deputy, and safety is always my number one issue. And what pastors said, that if they had come first, then no problem at all, but now that they're on the tail end of it, I'm in opposition of this. Safety is number one, safety is key. And then I also want to say, they've already stated that how their property line encroaches that area there, and I heard through the video, I believe, they said that they would not be out walking around, but we had a meeting sometime back, and they said that they wouldn't be under lock and key, is that correct? That they would not be under lock and key, they had privileges to walk around, like you and I from our houses. So with doing that, we, through the detox center, we already have them all times of the night, riding bicycles, walking through our neighborhood. I have grandchildren, I have small grandchildren, and safety is still my number one concern. And property value is my next concern. I didn't work hard through blood, sweat and tears to get my property the way that I want it. Is it needed? I'm sure it is. Do I have people in my family that have these issues that they have? I do. Do they need somewhere to go? They do. But why our neighborhood? Can they not be on the outskirts? Can they not? So I just want you to consider, and I want to make myself clear, I am opposed of this. Remember our loved ones who live in our community, because we are a close-knit community. So with taking that in consideration, just hear us out, and just remember, we live, we live in that neighborhood. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Long. We have one, and we have one card left here, and that is Director BJ Wirey.
This is like a movie theater trying to move around in here. Thank you for calling my name, I'm BJ Wirey, I represent Ward Seven, the people that you've heard from tonight live in my area, and I have to respect their wishes and their desires. They expect to have a safe home, they expect to know who their neighbors are, they want to work and play and have quite enjoyment of their property. We have the detox center, forty-four-plus residents that live there, that came in under sort of a guided situation, and now we have another unit that's wanting to come in with sixteen houses. Georgia did a beautiful job with her video, she's a wonderful person, I love her, but if she had came in first, it might have been a different story. But what we have is the density problem with forty-four units and now another sixteen, and that's fifty-six units. I have to support my neighborhood. We have Pecan Lake, we have Greenwood Acres, and we have Tall Timber, and they're represented to not, not to mention our preacher that's right across the street, and residents along Stagecoach Road. We're very concerned about the additional numbers of these kinds of activity group homes in our area, so I'm not in support of this, thank you.
Thank you. All right, so that was the completion of the cards in opposition, and so now we're going to ask the applicant to come back up, Mr. White. And you said you had somebody in your team, Mr. White, that wanted to speak?
No, particularly, yeah, I think so. Come on.
Okay, and please state your name for the record, and you can adjust the microphone.
Thank you. Ed Holman, I'm at The Gardens, here with my business partner, Georgia Johnston. I'd like to thank the Planning Department and the Commission for giving us the time here to present our case, and I appreciate everybody out here that's coming to speak. It shows how democracy works, we can all voice in our government, even down at the lowest levels here. I've heard everything they've said tonight, and I promise that our concerns line up with theirs, or we don't have any intent to ever cause any harm to their property values or to the safety of their families themselves. We've shown the video that shows what we do, we've invited folks, our neighbors, out to see the facility in Sherwood, or even our facility in Texarkana. We've reached out to Commission members and the department, invited them out, and some of you have come out there and seen what we do. We don't have anything to hide, there's nothing here to hide, we're not holding back, describing our mission, and we want to do more. The plan here is a beautiful site, and we can enhance the neighborhood, not hurt it. I'm sorry, but it's an eyesore right now, and we'll do nothing but make that better. As for people's safety, that's our commitment. We've got trained staff twenty-four hours a day that will work with these folks. In the daytime, we've got eight staff for sixteen residents, that's an incredible ratio of staff. In the evenings, when people are winding down, we do reduce the staff, but there's still staff all the time. We screen our residents, I was looking at the list yesterday of our other businesses, and we had a hundred and thirty-five applicants, and we've taken thirty-one of them, so we screen through, we look for criminal backgrounds, we're looking for sexual predators, we're making sure that they don't have recent violence, all those things, we're not equipped for those type of residents, and we cannot support them in our community. We're very sensitive to the neighbors feeling burned by other developers in the neighborhood, very sensitive to that. I'll just get to it, the facility is licensed by the state of Arkansas, they are required to be good neighbors. If they cause problems within the neighborhood, the neighbors need to call the state, there's a number to call, and every time you call, they have to respond. If the facility doesn't correct these things, they have to assign a staff member to be a liaison to the community. This is in the regulations for the drug and alcohol rehab, they have to do that. If they don't do it, state can go after them, and their options are not limited, anything, they can close the facility down if they choose. So I hate to get off on a tangent, but there are remedies for those problems if it gets to be a nuisance, and state does respond to those things. We're under similar regulations, if we violate that, they will come after us just as well. I've been in healthcare now for forty-five years, had to comply with some pretty strict regulations for many years. The healthcare industry is second most regulated after the power plants down in Russellville, so we know how to deal with those things. Getting back to our operations, we won't accept people who have recent drug or alcohol problems, we're not equipped to handle them, we're not licensed to, we won't do it. Our residents will be handicapped, they've got some sort of disability, every single one of them, as we've heard, we can't discriminate against them, but they either have a serious mental illness, or they have a developmental disability, an intellectual disability. So that's the type of people we have. We've gone out of our way to be honest and forthcoming with the neighbors. We held a meeting to introduce it, we had a video then, we had a few pages of flyers with frequently asked questions, and we spent another hour and a half answering questions with the neighbors. We've told them about our Facebook page, we've shown them everything we can to make them feel comfortable, as I said, we've invited them out there, our license defines the services we can do. But, you know, our residents, you saw in the video, they're going to look like us, they're going to look like our children, they're going to look like our grandchildren, but there are people that need a little help. They want the same thing, though, in life that we do, they want food, they want shelter, they want safety, and they want a sense of purpose. They want to live in a community, they don't want to live in an institution over in the warehouse district, they don't want to be isolated out in a place in the middle of the country. Eventually, many of these folks will receive enough support and training through our program where they can return to the community, they can get jobs, they can live either independently or semi-independently, maybe with some assistance as needed. It's a great program, you've heard, pretty much half the people have spoken, say they have friends, relatives, neighbors that need help, and this is the answer to it. In the case of the folks with a neighbor or somebody that they had to call the police, well, I'm going to be real honest, folks, I've got a bipolar son who's in prison right now. It's hard to control him, but if he'd been in a program like this, we would have had a different outcome, he would have gotten counseling, he would have gotten his medications regularly, and it would have been different. So what we're going to do is going to help people, and that's, we're trying to do everything we can to address these issues. We worked with planning, they've told us the changes we need to make, we're agreeing to leave a wooded buffer, we're going to clean out the ugly stuff, the trees that are falling down, we've had complaints about Bradford pears, we'll work with the neighborhood to say, what kind of trees do you want? We'll put them in, we'll decorate it nice, we're going to allow the POA to use it for meetings if they want to, because they need a space. We'll help with keeping the park up, keeping the garden up if they want. I heard they need help with the lake, they need some pumps, we'll help with that, we want to be good neighbors. We've agreed to the restrictions on the property. So we're trying to do everything we can, but this is a great location, it'll be quiet, it is zoned properly, you know, there are worse things that could go in there, the owner is trying to sell. And you all know the other things that are allowed here. You could have a, you could have a cemetery go in there. You could have a nursing home go in there, all kinds of properties. So we're not the worst thing that could go in there. I'm sorry. So I, I hope you all will do the right thing and approve this for us. Thank you. I'm, I'm open to any questions you have.
Before I open the, uh, uh, the board up, uh, the questions for questioning, I do have a, a question here. And I want to just say this. I, I, when we have a full house like this, I want to take a quick minute to say that I thank all citizens that came out today and the community and the neighborhood. Uh, definitely for being respectful. We appreciate that when we see items like this and they get very constrained and strenuous. Uh, so I appreciate everybody's respect today. I do want to say that. And, uh, before I open the floor up, uh, Mr. Holman, I want to say, because there have been some concerns with the community. To state the two things that stuck out to me. Number one is safety, uh, which everybody want to be safe in every neighborhood, right? And number two is the density issues. And I want to, if you can just speak to that, uh, to, to the board, um, and kind of tell us, give us a little bit more, expand a little bit further on that.
Sure.
Number one about, um, we kind of see what you've written and laid out, um, in, in your docs. But the maximum, the maximum occupancy, uh, by law. I kind of know what you're written, but, you know, sometimes if it's by law, you can go over that threshold. You can. Uh, number two, you mentioned that, uh, you have a staff of eight, which that's actually really good, I mean, ratio.
At any one time, we, we'll have about, uh, probably sixteen to eighteen employees at the building.
But I'm more concerned about, um, again, safety, security, uh, guards, or making sure that if, how would that be maintained? To ensure, uh, you know, uh, if passed, uh, or if not, but if, if passed, how could you ensure the neighborhood is safe? The, your property is safe and is, and controlled? So those are the initial questions.
Mr. Chair, I get a report from our facilities weekly on nine-one-one calls. As the owner, I'm kind of like Jerry Jones. I want to know it all. And, uh, my calls this week were two nine-one-one calls. One young lady ordered some chicken wings from Pizza Hut. She wasn't happy with them, so she called the Pizza Hut. They gave her some lip, so she called the police. Police came out there. They read her the riot act, told her they were going to take her in if she did it again. Second one was a nine-one-one call from our building, uh, reporting a wreck, somebody coming out of the Walmart parking lot. Those were my two calls this week. Can something happen? Somebody can, uh, can leave the building. They're, they're not prisoners there in most cases. Uh, we have people that are, I say prisoners, that are, that are court ordered to be in there. Others are there voluntarily. But, uh, we're under managed care, so if someone does elect to leave or is, as their, um, their managed care time, we coordinate with their managed care company to get placement for them. And until they have placed them safely, we are responsible for them. Uh, we, we do regular checks with the staff to resident ratio we have. We pretty much know where everybody is at all hours. They're, they're looking for someone. They go, oh yeah, he's probably out getting a smoke, and they'll go check. We've got cameras and keep a good video system, have ch, uh, chimes on the doors, so we know when the door is opening and closing. And they're locked in the evening, so, uh, we, we do all of that. Uh, as far as, um, uh, the violence, those things typically happen when people have been off their meds. I'm, I'm just speculating in the neighbors' cases, but that's pretty common what we hear. That's how people end up in the jails and in the hospitals. And this program was put together, I worked with the Department of Human Services since December of twenty nineteen, and kind of a task force to do this, to help empty the jails with their mentally ill and help get people out of the state hospital because they're backed up. Uh, we, typically, we see people staying in jail for a year or longer, waiting to get into the state hospital. So there's no place for them to go. And this is to help get people out, get them in a lower level of care before they can go back into the community. So they're getting constant therapy. They're monitored by a social worker. They're monitored by a nurse, by a psychiatrist, and a nurse practitioner. Uh, if they're starting to, something, uh, ramping up, the staff notices it, and they will get the professionals on it. So we've got a social worker that's on call, a psychiatrist that's on call, and they have to be there in a short amount of time if there's an incident. So that's, that's kind of how it works, and we, we do have nine-one-one when things get out, if things were to get out of hand. But it's not like what I hear next door. No, it's just not that way.
Okay. Uh, and I just wanted to confirm, you said there will be some security presence on there?
Well, the, the staff is trained for security. We don't have a, a security guard there, but staff is trained in that. Some of the folks we hire do have, um, correctional background, and that comes in handy, but the bulk of them are from, with behavioral tech backgrounds.
Okay. At this time, I'm going to open the floor up. I'm sure, uh, Commissioner, Commissioner Russell.
I have a few comments and questions to make. Um, one, I wanted to address density. Uh, Staff, can you confirm what's the size of this lot? It's about seven acres, right?
Uh, that is correct. About seven acres.
And, uh, there's going to be sixteen full-time residents at the site, not including staff?
Correct.
Okay. So, very quick back of the napkin math, talking about density. That's nineteen thousand square feet per resident for this property. The average lot size for a single-family lot in this city is between five and seven thousand square feet for a family of an average of four. So that gives you right over a thousand square feet per person. This is nineteen times the size of the average single-family home in the city of Little Rock. So when talking about density, not an issue. When we're talking about security, these are nonviolent people, right?
That's what we screen for. Yes, sir.
These are people who simply suffer from some disability. And is it safe to say, in your opinion, that a community environment is more conducive to promoting, I don't want to say rehabilitation, but that's, that's, it's the best word I can come up with, of these types of people suffering from a, a handicap so that they can re-enter society as a productive member?
I would say re-entry i- is something that a neighborhood like this would be good for. That's our, other two facilities, uh, do border on residential neighborhoods, and it's not an issue.
And, uh, question for Staff. This is a conditional use permit, correct?
Yes, Commissioner Russell, it is.
Which means the use being applied for is already allowed within the code?
Yes, it is. Uh, for conditional uses, that needs planning commission approval.
Correct. But there's no variances. There's no special treatment. There's no additional things that the applicant is requesting that are outside the zoning ordinance?
No, there's not.
Thank you.
All right. Do we have other questions? Commissioner Brown?
So first question to Staff, then the applicant. One of the things like the drug screening, the sixteen residents, that is actually in the application. Are we correct that if there's a variance from that, that then becomes a, uh, 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 a, a, a compliance issue?
Yes.
Okay. And the second thing, and I want to ask, before I ask the applicant this, I want to recognize that the neighborhood is very concerned, and I, I hear their concerns. And I mean, it sounds like that, that the whole, that, I don't want, I don't want to be dismissive of those, even though I think we're limited as a commission what we can do on this one because of some requirements that we have, although I think the board has more flexibility than we do. Because this, is, the neighborhood, just so you know, what else happens here today, you can't appeal to the board. They may or may not have more flexibility than we do. But when we look at this, I have two questions. One, you said that you're screening for back, the background, but then you also made a comment, made a go about people being taken out of incarceration. So can you clarify that? The number two, as I watched the video, what it reminds me of is some of the, uh, facilities around, like Chanel and stuff, that have, they're really just, um, nursing homes that have, as well as older individuals, have people with disability. I hate, I hate the term disability, but people with challenges.
Dementia.
Uh, um, in there, who might be younger. Can you explain, tell me where the difference and similarities are between what this is and where the, and those kind of facilities?
Sure. Um, frequently, what will happen?
But, but, I didn't answer the thing about the backgrounds of the, versus the criminal stuff.
Yeah, I'll, I'll start with the criminal part first. Um, what will happen, sometimes, like, as discussed, the police hauling off somebody. And they may have hit their mother, hit a grandmother. I mean, I've heard them all. And they're in jail, and nobody will bail them out. And they sit there and they say, we're, the judge will say they need to go to a state hospital. And the state hospital says, well, we'll put you on the list. Call us back next August. So they're stuck in jail, not getting any therapy, probably not getting any medications. Certainly not a good environment. And they, they get worse in there. And that's just prob, part of what we're trying to do is get them out of the jails, get them into the hospital, get them stabilized, and then eventually get them to where they can go to a lower level of care. And that, that's kind of how it works, so.
Is this facility going to have those kind of people?
They will have some. Uh, others will be, will get a referral from Baptist Hospital, from UAMS, from St. Vincent's, the other hospitals that have psychiatric units. And as they have stabilized folks, and we'll go interview them, sometimes it'll take two weeks, sometimes it'll take two or three months. I don't know what our record is for somebody that's been in the hospital, but I know we've had some that have been in over a year. And when, when they're ready for placement, only then will we do it. And our staff goes out and, uh, interviews them. We look at a referral package. I look at it. Georgia looks at it, uh, the, the staff. Shuns down here, he looks at it. Our nurse practitioner, everybody reviews it. And only then will we accept somebody in. But we've interviewed them. We reviewed. We've looked at their, uh, the medications they're on, their labs, everything we can to, to make sure they're going to be a fit, that's going to be safe, and somebody we can admit and treat properly.
My, my second question, please, about the difference between this versus the facilities on Chanel that have the, they're like nursing homes, basically?
Yeah, and I, I was in the nursing home business for a long time. Uh, most of those have like a lockdown unit for dementia, uh, or Alzheimer's disease. There's about twenty different diagnoses that they have for lockdown, but, um, that's generally for older with a different kind of diagnosis. And we, we don't handle that.
All right, other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner, okay.
Now, just in going back to this, this, the safety issue, and retired deputy long. Is it, is that right, Ms. Long?
Yes.
Thank you for your years of service. Um, yeah, it's just extremely concerning. And, you know, Mr. Holman, Ms. Johnson, I know, you know, we, we discussed this and, you know, looked at all the information on the facility. And, you know, thank you for your services, well to the community, because we do need things like this. And I think the question always is, is where do these things go, right? I mean, do we go outside the city? Do we go somewhere in the middle of nowhere? I mean, it just ultimately, like everything that comes before this commission that's contested, it's, 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 it's a balancing test, right? So I think going back to the safety piece, I mean, I think it's clear that there could be some folks there who have been convicted of a violent crime, plain and simple, correct?
We're going to look. If it's recent violence, they're not going to be in there. If it's something that happened twenty years ago and they've received treatment, and they still need some additional help and counseling, we will look at that person. But, uh, uh, if I get a referral from, um, I don't know. I guess if they're, if it's recent violence, they're probably going to stay in jail anyway. But, um, we, we're looking at not wanting somebody that's, uh, uh, just had a, a big episode that we can't handle. That's just too, too recent, um, and we don't feel comfortable with that. We've, we've got too many people trying to get in that we don't have to take the most difficult cases. There are places for that, and that's not us.
Okay. At this point in time, is there any policy that's, that's written down, that's on paper, that says, okay, these folks with this felony, class Y, but these folks?
Not really a policy like that. Um, and it's hard to get all of that information, but we, we look for the sexual predator, as I said. And, uh, we are looking at the violence, uh, to make sure. And, and most of these people don't have that kind of violence. The, the bulk of the ones we see, um, are, are going to be where they had an argument with their father or mother and hit them or something like that. It's, um, uh, the, the really rough ones are going, go on through the system. Um, that, that's kind of the sad part about it. As a father, I can say that, so. Uh, it's, it's not really an issue for us.
I guess.
I see where you're going, but we don't take those folks.
Right, okay. Because I just, I mean, we had, let's see, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven residents from this community, many of whom have been there for, for years, if not decades, speak out against this. And it's just, as a father with younger children, I know we have some grandparents and probably some parents out there as well. We do want to be one hundred percent certain that the folks there are taken care of. So is there anything else that you can speak to this piece of safety and ensuring the community's safety?
The building will have keypads on it. They're, they're not going out unless they're, uh, somebody that's earned those privileges, that's going to be totally compliant. Um, and as I said, we can tell as people are starting to have an issue. And if anything, that's probably going to be somebody getting mad at somebody at, at the dinner table and throwing a plate at them.
Last question, if, you know, God forbid, you know, something happens, you know, assuming, say, this is approved. It's built, you know, someone goes out into the community and breaks into a home or violates the rules of the facility. What is the, the recourse of the facility?
We will do everything in our power to support, uh, the police, the actions. And if they're, if they've done something like that, they would be removed from the facility ASAP. That would be an emergency discharge. We have to do those occasionally. And, uh, uh, my most recent one was somebody smoking in the room. We told them not to a couple of times, and the building had caught on fire a couple of years ago. I'm not going to go through that again, so they got a discharge. So usually it's minor rural things, um, but, uh, uh, we will discharge them. We, uh, we're going to have a shorter fuse than most places because I'm sensitive to the neighborhood. Uh, safety's going to be, um, it's not going to be like the other place. I just promise you that.
Last question on my end for now, just in terms of property values. Has there been any study, you know, with your other facility in Sherwood, right? The effect on property values?
Uh, I've been on the property for twenty years. Um, when we had to do our most recent rezoning, we sent out, did all the notices to the neighbors, and not an issue. Pastor lives right behind us. He's, uh, twenty feet from our fence. We get along great. He's pastor of the church next door. We've got another church on the other side with a school. No problems. Occasionally, some of our residents would go over there for church, but that's it. Uh, they play basketball on the church's basketball court. They exercise in the, the backyard. And I told Pastor, but he's injured. He's, that's good with me. So we're, we're good neighbors.
And we have a question for Commissioner Person.
Well, it's, um, it's not necessarily a question, I guess, but I feel like I owe it to you. We had a great meeting. I owe it to the people at Pecan Lake, uh, who I represented at the county level. Um, I keep having Pastor write words in my head, uh, how we need places like this. Uh, it's warranted, it's needed. But I also know that there is a drug rehab place in the immediate vicinity of Pecan Lake and Tall Timber and Greenwood Acres. And as a veteran, I understand how important that mental health is, but, you know, I have to have, I also have empathy with the residents, so, um, I'm torn right now. And it's, it's, I, I feel the sentiments of my fellow commissioners, my, my fellow commissioner at the end. You know, I saw he spoke on density. The area is seven acres, but this structure is not seven acres, correct?
It's eleven thousand square feet.
Right, so the, the building itself is not seven acres, uh, but the land itself is. So, again, I feel like I owe it to the people here to let y'all know what I'm going through and to... and to let you know what I'm going through and are you.
If I may. Christian Russell, was that you, Commissioner Russell?
Yes.
Okay. Is this a drug rehab center?
No, never will be. We're not licensed for that.
Is there any drug use permitted on the premises?
No, in fact, we screen residents and if we suspect it, they will be discharged.
So then the assumption can be made that the concerns of the community are related solely to the drug rehab facility that is in the neighborhood, which is not like the facility that you are proposing.
That's correct, and if the drug rehab had the same staffing ratio we had, they wouldn't have a problem.
Thank you.
I would like to comment on that. I believe that one of the concerns is not the fact that you're not a drug rehab place. I believe the fact there's gonna be two facilities in an im- immediate vicinity of neighborhoods or residential areas. So I don't think that is the actual concern that you're, will or will not be a drug rehab center. I believe it's the fact that uh, the two different locations right there next to each other. I just wanna make that for the record.
So two dissimilar uses being next to each other is somehow a cause for concern?
Correct, in a residential faci- in a residential area, yes, sir.
Well, it's not strictly a residential area because there are other commercial uses and other planned commercial developments in the area.
Where are the other commercial developments in Pecan Lake? Where?
Immediately north and south. O one, O S, O three, O one, P R. That's planned residential. It's a large residential development. Then there's the one immediately to the north. There's also a P D C. That's a Planned District Commercial.
There is no medical slash health slash mental facility in those areas that you just mentioned. Uh, there is one right next to Greenwood Acres and we have this proposed item here.
This is, this is a commercial use, whether it's medical or mental health.
You, you, you see, you see it how you see it. I see it how I see it. The residents see how they see it. So I understand what you're saying, nevertheless.
I also just wanna caution us, since we're, we're talking about it, again, the fact that it's a medical facility and that it serves disabled folks cannot be the basis for a denial at all.
Thank, thank you, Cameron.
Or else, or else we'll get in another lawsuit, which will be another problem. So just keep that in mind.
That's a good point, Cameron. And let me interject, gentlemen, I appreciate both of y'all's standpoints on this. And Mr. Holman, this, this is what makes it difficult. And I'm probably gonna go to staff just to confirm for the record, but um, you know, everything structurally is, is sound. Uh, you know, as far as following the, the book codes and rules. I think what we have here today is more maybe of ethical standpoint of the community as far as, and I know as, nothing is a hundred percent guaranteed when you're dealing with business, but how can they have some uh, insurance that, um, you know, they feel safe in their own communities, right? I mean, what, what can, what, I guess, what, I think what the board is looking for, uh, and, and a lot of points is, uh, what, um, you know, yeah, wh- what can uh, the gardens do to have some insurance? I say, hey, we're gonna make sure we have security out there day and night. We're gonna make sure if anything goes wrong, we have X, Y, Z on standby. You know what I mean? I mean, things, uh, policies that can be implemented, put in place and implemented, you know, for the surety of the community, because it's not just about, you know, the business. The business happen to be in the community. Does that make sense? So I think the board, and you know, we can't mandate you, but what we're trying to do is trying to see what skin in the game can the board do to have some insurance so that the community can feel comfortable, number one. And number two, you don't have, you don't have to worry about X, Y, Z. Now, we understand speculations are just speculation, so we're not arguing that point. But the community is, is looking for, they've already experienced one issue with the detox center, right? So what they're looking for is saying, okay, now we have, the gardens come in. What can, what can you do different, or what can be done so they can have a level of insurance that they feel some sense of safety when they have their children or grandchildren out there or themselves in their home?
Sure.
I think that's what the board is looking for in this instance.
And may I interject, and just to, just to touch back on, touch on that one as well. And this goes to the residents as well. Is there anything that can be done to come to a happy meeting? Because I know you're good people and I, these people do good work, so.
You know, Commissioner Person, I wanna say this, and hold on, for you, for the residents speak, because we, we try to be uh, we try to be understanding and respectful here, but what we wanna do is, we wanna keep things in order. And what we wanna do is so each and every commissioner up here can have a full understanding, a thorough understanding, so they can make a choice and, and they can have a vote, that they can have all of the uh, information and facts uh, present, okay? So thank you all for, for bearing with us. Sorry about that, Commissioner. We wanna make sure. So um, Mr. Holman, I think that's what we're trying to understand from you and, and your team.
Okay, y'all threw, you threw a bunch at me, but I'll try to regroup there.
No, no, so let me, do you, do I need to restate?
No, no, I, I think I have it. Um, uh, I'll tell you one thing, um, as we were looking at properties all, all around, um, one of them, there, there was a homeless situation already there on the site. Empty buildings, empty locations. That's a magnet for homeless. If we don't buy it and close on it, you're liable to see pup tents behind there, a couple dozen of them. Um, this, we're gonna put this thing to use. An empty building doesn't do any good for anybody. It's, um, you know, I, I'm sympathetic to the owners uh, that are selling it now, but uh, they're not gonna be doing the landscape, the upkeep on it any more than they have to, to maintain the value. We're, we're gonna make it look really nice. Security, if we've gotta hire a security guard, have them drive by, keep, keep track of things, maybe that will enhance the neighborhood. Um, we're, we're willing to do that. Um, I don't want anybody in that neighborhood to be worried about things. Uh, I, I know they've already got uh, security issues. I s- I see the Facebook post about break-ins in cars. I see lots of homes already have bars on the windows and doors. So it's not because of us, there were existing problems, but we will not contribute to the existing problems. It's not going to be an issue.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I just wanted to point out, uh, since this is a conditional use, uh, the commission can impose conditions uh, as they see fit on this application.
All right, thank you for the, for the record for that, Brad. And also, Brad, uh, question for you. Uh, Z, I mean, this, this uh, action item here, Z dash one oh one eight eight, they met all the, the criterias, is that correct?
They did.
For this, okay.
Yes, sir.
All right. So I mean, that's some good information to know for all the commissioners up here. If, if we have any uh, type of conditions that uh, you know, needs to be uh, for this vote, whether we disapprove it or approve it, I mean, definitely, I would love to hear that. If any of the commissioners have any conditions that they feel that's necessary or deemed to be necessary, I, I would be open and love to hear that. Commissioner Brown?
I guess I have to lean to our attorney, because I've heard different things on this that commission can impose those, but I've also heard that we can't make folks do things at the podium because that becomes pressure, I don't know if that might work for it. That becomes pressure on the applicant. Can you clarify where that, we are with that, please?
So there's, there is a, trying to make sure I know, I'm answering the, the right question here, but so there is, um.
And I may have asked the wrong one, so.
Yeah, no, 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 that's totally fine. So i- in, in the sense that uh, our by, I think it's our bylaws, um, it's either the bylaws of the code state that a, a significant amendment to an application cannot be made from the podium. Um, but in the conditional use uh, part of the code, the, the board, I mean, so the board, the commission itself can, um, you know, during, during this time, you know, i- i- if you guys have a condition that you wanna put on the application that's not already recommended by staff, or take one away for that matter. Um, you, you, you could do that for a conditional use permit.
So, so.
As long as it's reasonable.
Right, so for example, and I'm gonna go to what you said a minute ago, here. We couldn't say, you've gotta add like four house, four or more buildings to this, because I didn't make a change. But like you said, maybe you'd be willing to get additional security there to like drive around the neighborhood to help throw out things. Something like that could be added to the, to the thing if the applicant was willing to do it.
A- as lo- like I said, as, as long as it meets that reasonableness, uh, you know, I mean, if you, i- it would, it would depend on the detail of what exactly you were to be asking there, but yeah, in, in theory, yes.
All right. Yes, please, come to the podium. State your name for the record and the floor is yours.
Well, my name is Georgia. I was the one on the video. And I, I just wanted to, I guess, address the safety issue. That's where we keep coming back to, is safety. What do we do at the gardens to ensure safety? Sean Brown is our program administrator and he might wanna join me up here. But every day, there's always potential, when we are human beings, to get frustrated, to get angry, to need a timeout. Um, it is something that we discuss in morning meetings. It's something that's on our um, rights restrictions committee because we do have to sometimes restrict people's individual rights. If, just like with a diabetic, if their blood sugar is four fifty, they need to restrict their carbohydrate intake so their glucose doesn't go too high. Um, so those are the things that our program administrators um, will be constantly looking at. I myself am an RN. I'm in and out of the buildings. My mother is a volunteer at the gardens. She helps with the garden every day, every, does she come every day or every other day? Every other day. Um, and so I know sometimes there's a stigma around what a therapeutic community can look like. Um, but the folks that we screen, I can't say that there's never been an episode of um, of behavior in their past, but most of our folks are in their twenties and thirties. Um, and we do not take people, um, that's part of the screening process. That's what we look at. We, we're trained as behavioral health technicians, program directors, um, to, to de-escalate. We use a strategy called, um, uh. I'm going, we're going Monday. Handle with care. And y'all, it's because I'm getting trained myself. Sean is such an expert on it. And we, we are refining our program because we want to be able to de-escalate situations. And myself as an owner, that's something that we, we, we have not really struggled with. Um, I've had one person in the last year and a half that, um, the police were called on. He did not become violent with me. It was because he got upset with another person that lived there. And so he and I walked outside, um, and the police had already been called, but it's not something that happens all the time. Um, I heard the community say that there's constantly ambulances, fire trucks and police cars, and that's not our situation. Um, Sean, do you wanna speak to any safety issues?
Good afternoon. Uh, my name is Sean Brown.
Oh, sorry. Please state your name for the record.
Sean Brown. Um, I've heard everything that the people in the community have said and it's heartfelt. As a father, as a grandfather, I understand it. But I do understand the passion to have this, do this job with people with disabilities and mental illness. And we know that's needed. I understand the cry out for the neighborhood. But I've been with these people for a while now and I've dealt with them. And then like I said, the screening process, me, I make it very intense. I'm taking people that wanna change their lives, not go out and commit crimes on a daily. I'm taking people that don't want to go back home to their families. That could be mothers, fathers, uncles, grandfathers, grandmothers, to make a difference. We have people that's going to college every day. We have people that are working jobs, that are passionate about changing their lives and not coming through making a disgruntled neighborhood. And I hate that the haven has put this stigma on us that we're gonna come in and do the same thing that they're doing. We're nothing like the detox center. Those people are coming down. We're taking people from the hospital who've been stabilized, are ready to move on to the next part of their lives. And we're helped, as I say, we have staff. We're monitoring these people on a daily. We're rounding. We have a daily schedule. And I think the point that we're missing here, and I hear the people talking about safety, we have structure. And that's one of the most key components of running this facility, is the structure that we have. Knowing where these people are and what they're doing on a daily basis. I can pinpoint when I'm in the facility where someone is when they ask me where they are. I have a pin on that.
And I'm gonna verify that because whenever I come in to give injections, I can say, hey, Sean, where's, I won't call his name, and Sean said, oh, he's down in the dining room.
And one thing that I'll add to this as well, nothing is ever guaranteed. And I don't wanna put a guarantee on anything that I can do this or I can prevent this from happening. But I can tell you that whatever facility that we have, I'll put my best foot forward in training that person to be like me and assuring that they're putting the community and everybody around interest at heart. I can guarantee that, that I'll put my fo- best foot forward to make sure everything is going in compliance and doing what we need to do from a standpoint of me. I can't speak for everybody else that works for me, but I will train them and give them the skills and the knowledge they need to be able to support the community that we serve.
And Sean's the one that told us about handle with care. Um, just, and it was because, oh, sorry.
Sean is the one that, um, he was there the night that we visited with all the folks that live in the neighborhood and they had such safety concerns. Sean said, why don't we add handle with care? And that's what we're doing. Um, and it's, like I said, I'm a nurse of, since nineteen eighty-nine, but um, but I'm gonna go myself as a co-founder of this organization. And that way, it is from top down, we can ensure that everybody that works with the gardens is fully trained on de-escalation techniques. And that came straight from Sean.
Yeah, I think we, I think the, the board has kinda heard from both of y'all. We really appreciate it. Um, so if, if none of the commissioners have any other questions for you all.
Could I, could I have to say one more thing?
Sure, go ahead.
Um, one of the, I, I heard them the first night and I heard it again, why this property? Our accreditation, and I brought this in case anybody wants a copy of it, but the reason why we want that property is because we are accredited with a body called C Q L. It's the Quality on, um, Council of Leadership. And there's five different things that we have to ensure. And one of those things is my community. And we promise as the gardens to do these things. We prob- promise to let people use their environments, to live in integrated environments, to let people interact with other members of the community and to let people participate in the life of the community. And that is how come it, this property, excuse me, is so valuable. Is because it is, it does touch a neighborhood and it is on, going to be one of the, these days, on the um, master plan for the city, for the bike trail. And so that's one of our things that we're supposed to be doing as an organization to help people in their community. And that's all.
Okay, all right. So um, thank you. So any other questions, comments from any of the commissioners? And I just wanna, I wanna say this, um, we hearing from the board and I'm glad that we having a, a very good discussion on this. Because I, and we appreciate taking our hat off to you. We know this is, it's a difficult task and a difficult job. And we understand the community wants to be safe and they wanna have a sense of understanding. And I would just say this, there will, if I would just have to, if I lived in a neighborhood, what would I want? Safety would be number one, definitely, you know, for, for, for my child. And what would make me feel comfortable? And I think one of the gentlemen stated, he said, well, you know, security. And if it was up, you know, to me solely, which is not, but I would wanna see some security presence there day and night. Just to have a sense of security, I think is there for the, for the building, uh, on your property. And as well as if, if the community understands that you have a security in the neighborhood that's driving, that could also, you know, bring down, you know, for understanding, oh, wait, wait, I'm not going in that community or causing havoc or harm because they have security present, they're driving around, et cetera. So the whole property is safe, the whole neighborhood is safe, and it has some sense of security. So that's, that's my sense on it. I would love to hear any other commissioners, they have a, um, a, a statement or something like that on that, that yes, this would be a condition for them to have uh, security or want security presence day and night there.
I guess what I would have is a question to the applicant. What, uh, what are you willing to do to address this issue? Because I know, again, like most of up here, I'm very torn on this because, again, I, I'm a psychologist by training. I appreciate what you guys do, the criticality of it. I also hear from the neighbors and let's face it, let's not kid ourselves, they've been burned by this other facility. So my question to you is, what are y'all willing to do to show, and again, we can't force anything upon you, but what are you willing to do to come up here and say, look, we'll do this, that? So what, what, what do you wanna do for that?
One of the things that we have agreed to do, that we don't do anywhere else, is install a keypad. Nowhere else in Texarkana and in Sherwood, there are no keypads. There's a door chime that whenever it notifies us when folks come, mostly people come in, um, because our people don't wanna get out. They, they want to be there. But that's one of the concessions that we already agreed to do, is to put a keypad on.
I just have one comment. It seems like the problem is the detox facility. Or do they have security there? Because I don't think it's fair for, okay. I just don't think it's fair that, you know, this applicant is paying for security when the problem has not been addressed at this particular location. The, the problem is really at the other location that they don't have any responsibility for.
Could we share the information that Ed brought tonight? That you could call, you don't want to, okay. I was thinking that if they called the state, because, you know, you get enough complaints, the state comes out. And I was just thinking... Yes, sure.
All right, so, Mr. Hobbit, did you have another statement to make?
Got to raise that. We can get a security service. We can have them out there with the cars, where people will see that yellow light when they come in, and they'll be out there watching our building too. And that will enhance the security for the neighbors. If I was a bad guy looking for a house to break into, and I saw a security car sitting there, I'd probably go up the street.
Okay, does any other commissioners have any other questions or statements?
I was just going to ask, is there, are there specifics related to that? Is it a, just a patrol service who would come and patrol your facility every four hours? Just looking for...
Be available, and they can sit out there in the parking lot with the lights going. That's great. And we, it would be a roving security. We can arrange that, and it would work both ways. That way, they're close by if we need them, and they're also a presence for the neighborhood.
I feel, I feel comfortable with that. I mean...
Then the motion...
So yeah, and the motion...
Motion would include...
Include the conditions of what the applicant is willing to do. All right, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Yes, as a matter of fact, yes, I'm going to let you be the representative, and you come up and make a statement here for one minute. So either one, either one would like to come up, come up to the podium, please.
Our opposition to this, it's not about their disabilities, it's about the fear for our safety. What we'd like to have in that, in that location is another church. That's what we'd like to have. For as much as they say they will do this and do that, put a keypad, accidents happen. We don't feel like we should be the product of that accident. We have enough problems with everything else that's going around in that neighborhood. And we feel like, as taxpayers, and for our property values, and our peace of mind, for our families, our grandkids, that is not what we need in our neighborhood. That is not what's going to help me sleep good at night. I'm single. All I got is me and a dog. And I don't want to have to worry about if she starts barking, that somebody from their facility or somebody from the detox. We got enough problems already with the detox. We don't want our neighborhood to become a faci, a, a place for facilities. And then, you know, we start out with the detox, now we got people with mental issues, then what's next? I mean, prisoners, are we going to have prisoners in the next facility?
And I just want you to make, really, it's just for one minute, not to go on. I thought you had a statement or a question?
That, that's my statement.
I get it. And I would say, you can, you can head back to your seat and I'll talk, thank you. But, and, yeah, I know we're about to, I would love a motion here, just a minute, I want to make a statement. And, and, and what's so tough about us and this board, you know, we're not therapists, we're not, you know, some of us attorneys up here. But we're a commission, and we go by certain guidelines, and we go by certain, you know, rules and, and policies, right? So we're looking at certain criterias of which the criteria is met. But also, we like to be, well, how can we make sure that there is a cohesiveness to this? There's a partnership, right? If, if you've got a business coming in, or, or some type of entity coming in with the community, we like to make certain that everybody doesn't get what they want in anything or in life. But how can we get something that at least, that everybody can feel a little bit of comfort, right? And so, is it get difficult for us? Yes. But how can we at least minimize that risk? And if we can minimize or even mitigate that risk, you know, by if the community is giving a little bit, the company is giving a little bit, and we come to some type of supportive me, medium, right? And if, if, if they're saying, "Hey, we want to put security out there", not only does it make it safe for their property, or the detox property, which is unfortunate, and we can't talk about that, but it also makes it safe for the community. That's what we're trying to look at, and how can we come to some type of respectful medium and move forward with this? So if they're willing to do, do a little bit, and the community is willing to do a little bit, that's where we're trying to find it. I get it, I understand detox, which we can't discuss, is unfortunate. It's kind of like the, the bad apple to spoil the bunch, right? But if they're willing to do certain things, they meet the criteria, we have to look at that into effect as well. So with that being said, I would love to entertain a motion with the conditional, the conditions that the applicant stated that they will utilize or have in a security patrol.
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion that we approve staff's recommendations of approval of the requested conditional use permit in file number Z-10188, subject to compliance of the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And the two stated conditions, first, that the conditional use permit will be for The Gardens facility and operators only, and will not be transferred to another user. And second, with the applicant's permission, that there will be 24-hour security services provided on the premises.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. May I get a roll call vote, please?
Sorry, waiting for the mic to come on. Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges? He stepped away. He stepped away, I'm sorry. McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Come back to me.
Yes, sir. Russell?
Aye.
Semard?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Commit back to Commissioner Person?
No.
Motion's approved.
Thank you. And thank you for everybody coming out for this. I know this was difficult. And I would definitely say for the neighborhood, for the community, as well as The Gardens, for y'all to keep communication, keep the lines of communication open. Talk and see how y'all can definitely cooperate, and definitely come together and making sure that, you know, that the community is safe. Thank you all. We will give a minute before we get started to the next item, for everybody to depart. The next item on the regular agenda.
How long, you want to take five?
Yeah. Well, we're going to give just a quick minute here. As a matter of fact, is because that one took some time here, about an hour and a half, I'm going to allow, let's take five, and for just a quick bathroom break.
We want to get back, uh, get back started. I think we have all the commissioners back here. Alright, so what we're gonna do is, um, we got item number fifteen and item number seventeen. So I think there, I think I see one walking down now, the other one here. So let's go ahead. And can you please kind of, you see in the hallway?
It is a lie. There's a lie.
That's fine. Really, okay. Alright, we're gonna give just another about thirty seconds. Alright, as a matter of fact, as, uh, item number fifteen, the master company, is the applicant present? Alright, please make your way to the podium, and we're gonna start with the reading. Monty, if you will.
Item number fifteen, file number Z ninety-eight fifty-eight A, master company P C D ninety-nine eleven West Markham Street. The applicant's proposing to rezone this zero-point-two-two acre property from O-three to P C D to allow for the use of his existing fifteen-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot office building for office space and food services. The existing building will be split into two suites, A and B. Suite A will be eight-hundred-ninety-five square feet, be consolidated into a cafe, bakery, ice cream and pizza restaurant with a minor area for storage, and suite B will be six-hundred-and-twenty-five square feet and used for office space. The property is located in O-three zoning again, uh, one-story brick frame, fifteen-hundred-and-twenty-square-foot office building is near the middle of the property, and this is at the corner of Markham and Oak. The proposed business will operate Monday through Sunday, six A M. to midnight, maximum of two employees. The eighty-nine, eight, eight-hundred-ninety-five-square-foot space expected to have fifteen-person seating capacity, and there will not be a drive-through window. Two concrete parking areas exist on the property. There are eight spaces, uh, in front or north of the building and four spaces in the rear. Access drives from Oak Lane serve both parking areas. Section thirty-six-five-oh-two of the city's zoning ordinance requires one parking space per five-hundred-square-feet for office and one parking space for a hundred-square-feet, each hundred-square-feet for restaurants. Uh, the proposed park, number of parking spaces conforms with that. A commercial dumpster will be placed at the northwest corner of the building and be screened and secured. A fence will be constructed along the southern property line. Sightlighting will be low-level, directed away from adjacent properties. Staff is not supportive of the requested rezoning from O-three to P C D. Staff does not feel that it represents an appropriate transition to, into a single-family residential area. South and southeast of the property's zone are two consisting of single-family homes. Staff feels that a business conforming to O-three would be a better, would better serve as a transition from Markham Street of Main Arturo Roadway into the residential area. Staff does not feel it was appropriate to introduce commercial use at this location, a relatively small property adjacent to the single-family use. Staff also has concerns with the proposed hours of operation and parking. Although the number of parking spaces conforms with typical ordinance requirements, staff does not feel there's adequate paved area in the rear of the building to allow appropriate vehicle maneuvering. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested P C D rezoning.
Thank you, Monty. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
My name is Pavitran. Uh, I'm not gonna take too much of your time. I know a lot of things. So what I'm requesting is, uh, uh, I'm from the location nine-nine-one-one West Markham Street. I'm asking to rezone from, um, a office zone for a commercial use, neighborhood use. So the proposal what I have is like, I'm trying to put like a small cafe, coffee, uh, food, like bakery, ice creams. There are schools around, good neighborhoods around. They need a demand for, uh, like a store where they can go, but they can get their coffees, donuts in the morning, and kids can get their ice creams. So like mentioned, uh, we are not in a place to put, uh, drive-through. Already, the property is secured with a fence for six feet, and, uh, all the ways from the left side, right side, everything is blocked. And, uh, we provide like eight parking spots in the front of the building, and there is four parking spot in the rear, rear side of the building. So mostly like, we're not completely utilizing the building. Uh, we're like doing us two, two suites, one for office use, like a small area for six-hundred-square-feet and plus, and rest of the eight-hundred-and-seventy-five-square-feet is for the cafeteria area. There are a lot of office present there, and there is a school like few miles away. And, um, like say, like next to me, there is already retail, uh, store. They have tobacco and grocery stores, and there is also a market, like a strip center around there. It's like Zone C. So, and like I, I have a report from A S B D C saying, like, there is a demand for good restaurant and cafeteria. If you would like, I would like to pass if you all wanna take a look at it. So this... Exactly for that point, uh, what, what are the demands? There are still like more demands in that area which could satisfy the neighborhoods. And, um, and I'm not on the, uh, the entry and exit is not facing Markham. It's in the Oak Lane. It's a dead end, so I won't think like there will be too much traffic problems getting in and out. Um, and I'm requesting the board to give me permission and, uh, to change it to, uh, C-zone, like C-two-zone, like a neighborhood store, not like a big commission. We're not gonna build anything big or anything, just gonna use that purpose for different. I tried to lease it for office and everything, but it did not work. I've been, uh, doing it for last two years. And I also presented this last year in front of both two, and it got approved and was like, lot of things were changed when it comes to, like, they were... They thought like it could be a gas station, but no, it's like no, and there is no beer sales because there's a church and school nearby. So it's going to be a small neighborhood place where you can get your snacks and coffee. The office people who wanna go to the office, they can grab their coffee and donuts in the morning. And like kids coming out from school, they can get their ice cream. So it's going to be like a small in-and-out store. This is my proposal.
Alright, thank you. Since there are not any cards in opposition at this particular time, I'm gonna open the floor up for the commissioners to ask you any particular questions or make any comments.
Questions, staff? Um, this is zone O-three right now, right?
Correct.
Um, correct me wrong, but isn't there like a provision in O-three for like a small cafe or something? And how is this different than what's being described? And then why is the P C D not just a straight, I'm just trying to understand the difference?
Well, the O-three office zoning category has what is called accessory uses.
Right.
A restaurant is an accessory use, like, and like a, um, drugstore.
Right.
Uh, just your small, um, commercial uses are considered accessory uses, but that's only allowed in ten percent of an office building.
Okay, so it's because it's, this is, this is being the primary use, it's not an accessory use to being used primarily?
Correct, correct.
Alright, okay, thank you.
Alright.
What is the building being used for now?
Uh, it's going to be a cafeteria, coffee.
What is it now?
Uh, it is just like a vacant, like, location, like...
Go ahead, Monty. Its previous use was office.
Okay.
The previous.
Got it. Yes, sir. Thank you.
And I'm not sure how many commissioners are familiar with this area of town, but there's a lot of retail and commercial uses within spitting distance. Dave's Cigars is literally across the street. There's a strip center right on the other side of Dave's.
Hard West, all that stuff.
Yeah, there's hard, there's hotels right up the street at Markham and Shackelford. I mean, this is, this is a commercial.
And what are your operation hours again? It'd be Monday through Sunday, six to midnight?
Yes, sir. We're trying to be duly, because we provide like donuts and coffee. We have to be early morning and like, uh, say like ice creams and everything. Mostly, we, we trying to open as like Markham, but everyday vehicle per day is twenty-four thousandths plus vehicle, but there's a survey saying like after eight, it's gonna be going down. So we cutting down the staff, like, just to keep if anybody need anything, like till open till, like, trying to be till midnight, but like if not, we gonna close early. So basically, like, other operations, other stores are open till eleven, so we gonna match with them. So that's what I right now. There is like, because we did not get into operation, we don't know how it is going to be. But comparing the subway, the, uh, there is another pizza place next to the, in the strip mall. They all are open till eleven, so maybe I, we're gonna be open till eleven.
Okay. Any other questions? Alright, if not, uh...
I just have one thing to say. I remember, I'm sorry. I remember when this application was brought up a couple of years ago. Um, and there was an issue with the use of the driveway of next door. Is there a fence, you said there was a fence?
No, man. Actually, we closed it. It's completely fenced. There is no gonna be, no, no drive-through or anything.
Okay.
So it's completely like, uh, six feet fenced with the complete gate. So, and it's like, you know, if we need to do that, we need to, uh, make a more big remodeling or anything, so we don't have idea of doing drive-through or anything.
Any other questions? If not, I'd love to entertain a motion.
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve applicant's request of rezoning and file number Z-dash-nine-eight-five-eight-dash-A from O-three to P C D, with the exception of staff's recommendation for denial.
Second.
Have a motion a second. They get a roll call vote, please. Yes, sir. Commissioner, Mariah?
Yes.
Bernard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges? McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Yes.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Fickers?
Yes.
Motion's approved. Thank you, applicant. Y'all have a great day.
Thank you, sir.
Alright. And our last item on the regular agenda for today is item number seventeen, Z-dash-one-oh-one-two-A-dash-A. Is the applicant present, please? Alright, the applicant is making their way to the front. Uh, Monty, if you can provide the reading, please.
Okay. Item seventeen, file number Z ten-thousand-one-twenty-eight-A. This is the Orndorf number one P D R located at the southeast corner of East Twenty-first Street and Bragg Street. The applicant is proposing to rezone this zero-point-one-six acre property from R-four to P D R. The property is proposed to be replanted into five lots, and then each lot will contain a single-family residential unit. The applicant will not reside on the property and intends to market these for lease or sale. The building will, the building will contain five two-story single-family units. Each unit will be thirteen-hundred-and-twenty square feet in area with a patio area along the north property line facing East Twenty-first Street. Section thirty-six-five-oh-two of the city's zoning ordinance typically requires one parking space for each single-family residence. Uh, staff does not support the parking plan and suggests that the applicant provide off-street parking as required by code. As, as, uh, proposed, there is no off-street parking. The site plan shows the building will have a twenty-one-foot setback from the west property line, eight feet from the east property line, five feet from the north and ten feet from the south property lines. The building will not exceed a height of thirty-five feet. The applicant noticed that typical building materials will include asphalt shingles, a brick facade, and three sides being vinyl siding. Uh, the applicant did not provide a response to staff regarding required landscaping on the property. Uh, staff does not support the proposed P D R rezoning. All the proposed development will not be out of character with the development pattern in the area. Staff feels that the proposed site development is overdeveloped in a manner that will not allow the development to comply with off-street, the typical off-street parking requirement. Although the parking plan will create a minor increase in traffic, staff feels a proposed parking plan will have an adverse impact on the surrounding properties, city services, and emergency vehicles that may need to access property along the right-of-way. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested P D R zoning.
Thank you, Monty. Applicant, please state your name for the record.
Yeah, I'm Vernon Williams with Garnett Engineering. I'm gonna touch on a couple of the issues that Monty just brought up, and then I'm gonna pass this to Mike Orndorff, the developer on this. Um, I think the, Monty made a comment about it's not being responsive on the landscaping. I think that had to do with who was responsible for the landscaping. And we plan to sell these homes, and, you know, each individual owner will own a portion of this lot and they'd be responsible for their own landscaping on that. And then, um, I think staff has said that they don't like the street parking, but, you know, I can't tell you that there's more than enough room along high, uh, along Twenty-first Street, um, to support five spaces which are needed for these. There's also the potential to park on Bragg Street, which would provide some additional spots. I'll turn it over to Mike now.
Yeah, thanks, guys. Appreciate the opportunity to, uh, share this project with you guys. Uh, I'm Mike Orndorff. I live in Pettaway. I've lived there for eleven years. I'm, uh, raising a, uh, seven-year-old and a four-year-old in this neighborhood. Uh, I plan to live in this neighborhood for another, um, eighteen minus four years, so another fourteen years at, at a bare minimum. Uh, we plan on, uh, raising our kids through high school, uh, in this neighborhood. So, uh, it's, um, uh, with that in mind, that, uh, we're wanting to, you know, develop in a way that, uh, we think is appropriate, uh, uh, for raising our, our children. And, and, alright, so, that said, I, I, I've got a, uh, a handout that you guys are all, all looking at. I'm, uh, I'm just gonna kind of share with you a, a few of the project goals. Um, so, uh, just as a, as a businessman, I, I can see that the workforce has largely been overlooked. Uh, we're not, uh, doing a, a great job, um, providing, you know, something closer to workforce housing. Uh, so we're trying to increase the inventory of attainable housing through lower-priced one and two-bedroom homes. Uh, the average new construction home size is about twenty-two-hundred square feet, and I know that this, uh, some of those were, uh, were showing that they were thirteen-hundred, maybe eleven-hundred square feet. This is like, we're, we're, what we're seeking is, uh, a site plan for us to, um, you know, uh, develop out of. So, uh, just because it's showing eleven-hundred square feet, um, don't assume that these are gonna be like twenty-two-hundred-square-foot houses or thirty-six-hundred-square-foot houses. Uh, the goal of this project, uh, would be to build, um, primarily one-bedroom, uh, houses. Uh, so, uh, we're trying to close the first-time, uh, home buyer's age gap. Uh, currently, the average first-time home buyer is thirty-nine. Um, in the nineteen-sixties, it was twenty-six. Uh, trying to maintain the economic diversity of our neighborhood. Uh, the current median sales price for new construction in Little Rock is four-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand. Uh, these, these homes target is sub, uh, a hundred-and-fifty-thousand dollars, so. Um, and just a, a brief note, uh, about, uh, but they, I, I've read about this, uh, they call the firefighter's test. Like, is that the housing that we're building as a city, um, does it meet the firefighter's test in that, like, can our public servants, can our firefighters, can they afford to, uh, buy the homes that we're building? And, um, uh, and, and currently, we're, we're failing the firefighter's test in that the homes that, that we're building at four-hundred, at, at a median price of four-hundred-and-forty-seven-thousand dollars, like, is, they're, they're not, um, attainable, uh, to our public servants. Um, so the main concern is street parking. Uh, we intentionally made these, we're, we're asking for, uh, twenty-two feet wide at a minimum, uh, lots to accommodate, uh, a, you know, single car, which is per code to, uh, you have to provide parking for at least one vehicle. Uh, the street parking is already there. It's safe, it's legal, it's free. Uh, currently, nothing, anybody could develop this today, and it wouldn't, you know, they could park seven cars around it. Uh, that's, uh, it's really not what is, uh, being voted on tonight. But, um, so, um, I lost my train of thought. Uh, street parking is, uh, oh, it's part of the culture here in Pettaway. Um, it has been practiced, uh, since the invention of the automobile. I personally, street park, I do it, uh, intentionally, having young kids. We live near Rockefeller. And, uh, a lot of the other parents are often in a hurry to get to Rockefeller. And, but my kids like to run across the street to their best friend's house, and so I intentionally, uh, park in the street. And then my neighbor, he also parks in the street, and we create a little bit of a pinch point there, uh, that naturally calms the traffic. And then, then obvious, it obviously creates a steel barrier, um, between the, the cars and, uh, my kids who might be playing in the front yard. This is not, uh, you know, a new concept to our neighborhood. I just put a couple of examples, um, that are here in Pettaway. Uh, this is a quadplex that's on Scott and, um, E-sixteenth Street. There's no off-street parking at this, uh, location. And then also the sixplex that's on Commerce and East Fifteenth, there's no off-street parking. So this isn't a, a new concept for our neighborhood. Um, I'm, uh, I, uh, one of the neighbors who are most closely impacted, uh, told me today that they sent an email supporting this project. Um, and, um, yeah, I'm just, uh, open for any, any questions.
Alright, thank you. So at this time, I'm gonna open the floor up for any, uh, questions by any of the commissioners. Alright, thank you so much. Questions? Alright, yeah, if we have one, we'll bring you back up. I guess for staff, I guess the main reason that, uh, staff was not supportive of this was primarily the parking?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, that is correct.
Okay. Alright, um, any other questions or statements from any other commissioner?
You know, I'm gonna ask one question. Mr. Orndorff, just in terms of Pettaway, how many, I mean, what percentage right now of, of houses that are built in that neighborhood? What percentage have off-street parking? What percentage of houses are on-street parking?
Ooh, I don't, yeah, I, I wouldn't be able to tell you. I mean, I would say that every, a hundred percent of the houses that are built, well, minus one. Actually, I didn't mean to, but when I first moved in the neighborhood, I was able to, um, sneak in one there that I did not provide off-street parking on. But, um, almost a hundred percent of the houses that I've built, so we're at ninety-plus units in the neighborhood, have had, uh, off-street parking. We did provide off-street parking on. I remember what I was gonna tell you. Uh, the twenty-two feet, like, we intentionally made them twenty-two feet wide because that accommodates a street parking, uh, space. So if there, you know, I understand, like, you wanna get one car off of, uh, the street, but you would, you would just lose your street parking by pulling the car off of the street. Um, you would reduce your billable area, and, um, and then also you've got, you know, and five automobiles that would, you know, be, uh, crossing that public right-of-way in the sidewalks, et cetera.
Hey, Mike?
Sir?
That's not Commerce and Fifteenth. What house is that?
The sixplex?
Yeah, that's not Commerce and Fifteenth.
Um, the sixplex is on Commerce and East Fifteenth, yeah. Does, can anybody, is CBS Fact Checkers here? Can anybody help me?
Commerce and East, Commerce and East Fifteenth is the zigzag house, the vacant lot, the church.
The zigzag house is the sixplex, right?
That's a yellow house.
Oh, I'm sorry. The, the writing for that one is to the right. That's the fourplex on Scott.
Okay.
I apologize. I'm, uh, not a great PowerPoint president, like, I haven't done PowerPoint since I was, uh, in high school. And I remember getting an award for PowerPoints, but, um, I have like two-thousand-seven PowerPoint. You know what I mean? Like, that's how old it is. So I apologize. Not the best presentation, um, not winning on that, but...
Mr. Chair?
Go ahead, Monty.
May, may staff ask a question?
Please.
Um, since you're utilizing basically the entire frontage of this lot for parking, you have noted that standard city trash pickup will be utilized.
Mm-hmm.
Where are you proposing that these residents for each of these five units put their trash can for pickup?
Uh, I mean, we, we, you just, you just push it out to where your car is on the trash day. I mean, we deal with it regularly. Um, and, uh, I don't know, it, it happens. It happens at my house. I park on the street and I push the, the trash can out. I do push it out to the length of the car to make it that much easier.
But where do you keep it?
Where do I keep my trash? On the side of my house?
Wherein it's not being picked up? Where do these homes put their trash bins?
I would recommend that they put them out, you know, where they park their car.
So just leave them on the side of the street?
Yeah, for trash day.
All week long, the rest of the...
Oh, um, I suppose I could, you know, put it around back and then drag it around. I mean, that's where mine was for, up until just recently.
So the three units in the middle, they'll have to go all the way around the block to grab their trash and then drag it all the way back around the block?
Yes, sir. Yeah, that's what they'd have to do. Do you think they would not buy the house because they would have to do that? Like, do you see that a problem? Like, I mean, if you're trying to buy a new house and you're looking for houses, good houses in a hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar range, and you're like, man, I was so close, I was gonna buy it, but I gotta drag the trash can all the way around the house, like...
I see convenience.
I understand that you wouldn't, but I, I, I talked to a lot of buyers and, uh, and that's, that's typically, that's not the thing that like deters them from buying a home. But I appreciate, I appreciate the consideration about trying to get your trash out, but, like, they're trying to get in the new homes. Like, that's the, that's the problem that we really have, or like more affordable, more attainable houses that are within a, 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 a price range that people can afford.
No, I, I got it. That was a good point by Commissioner Russell. Thank you, Commissioner Russell. That was a good point. Um, I wanna ask it for staff and then maybe, uh, pick it back off to the applicants. Um, I see they have a layout for, is it five? So five homes? Did, did staff make a recommendation, say, hey, if, maybe if you cut out one of the homes? Now, I understand that may kind of put in, go into their profit and may not be feasible for the applicant, but did staff make a recommendation, say, hey, if you take out one of the homes, then you can add maybe some drive-through or conditional type of drive-through for parking or something, something like that or anything?
We only suggested that off-street parking be provided. We didn't suggest how.
Okay.
That might, might happen.
Okay.
And, and, and to, to further, uh, Commissioner Russell's issue with the trash cans in the three middle units, I mean, not only are they gonna be dragging them all the way around, they've got... not only are they gonna be dragging them all the way around, they've got to cross other people's lots to get there. And I'm guessing like with any other residential lots, if some of these people wanna fence their rear yards, then there is not going to be an avenue to get from the rear yard to the street. They're gonna have to be kept somewhere else.
Okay, that's fine. So back to the applicant.
I suppose we'd have to create some type of an easement for trash can access in order to prevent people from building a fence in order to get their trash out, and that's reasonable.
You kinda see where I think we all was going, with the question leading down that road. Financially, I understand it may not be feasible, like you're trying to maximize your bills so you can have some type of justifiable return. I get it. Have y'all looked this in, hey, instead of building five, we would build four, and we can add parking or all these trash?
Well, actually, yeah, we originally planned to present this as four, and then got to looking at it, but there was just all this unused land. And at the end of the day, like, I don't think that is, you know, personally, I don't think that that's going to make that big of a difference. Like, I would concede one of these units in order to pursue this project. So don't think like I'm like, you know, just feet stuck in the mud over it. But, you know, just from a land use perspective, I thought like, well, this is, you know, there's actually another twenty-two feet that we could get another one on there. We can, which, you know, and I am a for-profit developer. But I need you to look past that. Like, I'm trying to get down to a specific price point in order to meet the market's needs.
I get it. Is that, and that's kinda?
We get to spread the cost of the lot out over a fifth property if we were able to build it.
Kind of the main reason, if you can spread the cost out, you add another one? Cause I was thinking at first, I understand the feasibility, and I'm sure y'all did your studies on that, to make it, hey, we can build this cause, construction cause, timber, etc. We get it.
In some capacity, I mean, you could, I mean, the way my mind works, it just makes the lot price on all five more inexpensive. You might could say, well, it makes the land free for the fifth one, sort of. I mean, it just depends on how you wanna get there. But for sure, it reduces the cost of each home, the more homes that you can build.
Well, just like my colleague down here, Commissioner Russell stated, you know, about making it, you know, convenient, I should say. You know, you go to other people's lots and property, etc., of being creative and how, how do you go about that? Cause I was thinking, okay, if you have four, maybe build a parking space that, you know, all of the tenants can park in that space. They have trash can. You can build like a little fence, you can build a trash can, you make it look nice and neat. You're a developer, so you get all of that. But you know, I know you're trying to maximize your cost structure. So what we're trying to do is, where is that happy medium? You know, how do we do that? You know, and I think, you know, I think that's what the commissioners up here are trying to get a grasp for. And being creative. If that's something that you all could do, I'm sure, possibly, is that something that y'all have thought about? If so, we would love to hear that or share that with us. Could you come to the podium, please? Thank you.
If you really go from four to five, it's not about how much money he makes, it's about lost opportunity. Because you only have four-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar houses in an area that needs him desperately instead of five. That's really, that's really what it's about.
No, we get it, and we get with the parking in that neighborhood. I'm sorry, who?
It's an excellent point, but Mike, you and I don't agree on a lot. I applaud what you're trying to do with this, this development, but I think you're trying to overdevelop the lot. I think if you went to four, you could get the required parking on the alley for all forty minutes.
It's at a slope, it's, sir.
Doesn't matter, it's a car. I don't care if it's a slope or not. You would also have an area dedicated for trash. You'd have an area dedicated for all of your meters, all of your water heat. I mean, the development itself would be easier. Not only on the people that are gonna live in these houses, whether they're tenants or whether they're homeowners, but then they also have a dedicated parking spot. You're still gonna have on-street parking.
I'm surprised that you are digging in on not, on the street parking.
Professionally, I have to operate within the zoning codes that we have.
But you're allowed to offer your personal opinion on street parking, right?
Not while I'm sitting here.
Oh, okay.
It's not my job.
Alright, right on. No, I respect that.
If you wanna get together after this, start changing zoning, I'm ready for it. Beer is on me.
Alright, well, I mean, this is a good opportunity. I mean, with that said, this is a good opportunity. I mean, that would be, and staff and I have discussed, like, this is an interest of mine to see that zoning might, you know, change in this way. And this is a good opportunity for the city to kinda pilot this in a way, like, well, let's see, like, what type of issues are we gonna get from this level of density? You know, trash, you know, clearly being, how big of an issue does trash become for people who are, like, this is their first home? You know, like, they don't even know that, they're not even thinking about what type of problems trash is gonna be. Like, they're just trying to get in their first home.
If you wanted to have that type of discussion, I would recommend doing a traffic study on this property.
Mr. Chair? Oh, I got Commissioner Hart and Commissioner Brown.
Well, I got just one quick comment. This is a small development on a small piece of property. And so the way I sort of look at this is the free market is gonna weed this out. If this doesn't work, you won't build anymore. And if this works and goes gangbusters and you sell these and have them under contract as pre-builts, you'll be back wanting to build more. So I don't, if this were a hundred units, I would share some of these same concerns. But with this smaller development, and then the other thing is, on the density issue, it's like we go back and forth as a commission on density. When people, when people spread out or go out west because they want land, we're like, oh, well, you're abandoning the city and you, it's urban sprawl. And then when people come in and put houses together and create density, oh, well, you don't have enough parking or there's no place for the trash can. I just, I would, I'm gonna be in favor of this and just let the market dictate whether or not we have more of this type of development.
Just for example, I mean, well, two examples. One.
Oh, I'm sorry, hold, Commissioner Brown has a question or statement?
A follow-up. I've got a little bit different view. I mean, I appreciate Commissioner Russell's, he knows more about architecture than I do. But the part about like trash and some logistics here, I mean, this looks very familiar to things like when I was in DC, where, you know, you see them all over the place.
Yes, sir.
And the initial person who buys it, not a big deal, isn't thinking about it. When they try to resell it, it's an issue. So is there a plan or do you change, whether it's four or five, don't know, don't care? But is there a way to fix where things like the trash, I don't even know the meters, but yeah, you have to have a place for those? The street parking doesn't concern me as much as a commissioner, except for the code issue. But what's your plan to address that? Because otherwise, you get stuff that can't be sold, and then, you know, ten years down the road, everything's sitting empty because nobody wants to buy them.
Well, I'm sorry, what's the plan? You said several things, and you were like, what's your plan for?
Little details that my fellow commissioners have brought up, some of whom know more about architecture than I do. I understand that right now you haven't thought about them. That's okay. And you're right, for the first-person, first-person buyer, probably not gonna think about it because it's new or thinking it's great. There's not much in the neighborhood. Ten years from now, there's gonna be more persons trying to sell it. They're gonna think about this stuff. And again, let's have, see in DC, you can go out to Alexandria, Virginia, and they're full of stuff like this that sits empty because nobody wants to buy it because of these exact issues. What is your, so I'm thinking that way. What's your plan to address those things? Because what I do is do this and have it sit empty ten years from now because you're on the same issue of all the other empty spots there. So is there a plan for that?
I think, I just, I have not considered what problems there might be ten years from now. When, that's just honest, like, I just have not considered that. But what I do know is that, like, what I'm proposing is stuff that I've seen all over the United States, all over Europe. And that's not always the situation ten years from now. Ten years from now, they appreciate and value. And people who buy them understand that there may be a couple of things that are a little bit more cumbersome. They're gonna have neighbors that are a two-hour firewall away from them. Like, there are things that are just less inviting as the house that's on forty acres out west. But these, this is, it's just more inventory, more opportunity for people to start climbing that ladder of upper mobility. And don't get me wrong, I really do appreciate the feedback. I wanna perfect this, and I wanna get better. But this is, this is our, you know, this is us kinda going in this direction of trying to serve this market that, you know, from my perspective, has just been overlooked for a very long time.
Now, we got a question from?
Yeah, I used to live in an area of homes just like this when I stayed in DC. And I will look at my fellow commissioners when I ask this question, and yourself. As far as the issues, the issues that we are talking about, would a simple concrete pathway suffice for, instead of walking over wet grass after a surprise it rains in Arkansas, dragging your trash bin over in the backyard? Would a simple concrete pathway suffice in a situation like this?
I think like we're, this is going to require some sort of a POA, or I mean, some sort of HOA, some sort of agreement. So I was trying to think like, okay, so now we gotta get an easement in place or whatever, which is something I have not, I've not had to do up to this point. But yeah, I mean, it just seems like this would be something that gets, you know, kinda worked out amongst neighbors. Because you've got three there that are gonna have to go through other people's properties to get out to the street where they're probably, but this isn't like, so now the two on the corner is like, ha, I got you. Like, you don't get to take your trash out, you know, I just, I, but, but. Yeah. But both of them, hopefully both of them would not be that way, like, you know, at least one of them is like the nice neighbor, like, oh, yeah, you can take it around here.
One possible solution, you've got the room on the one side, you just create a POA area where they're all stored together. Instead of dragging your trash to the curb, you're carrying one bag at a time around to the community area where you store the five dumpsters. I mean, there's a lot of ways to take care of this.
These are eleven hundred feet. At the end of the day, you're not producing a, an apartment. It's about the size of an apartment when they just take their trash bags down to a common dumpster.
Right, yeah, and I've thought about that as you're talking, but I don't, yeah, I don't know that we, there's room for an apartment-style dumpster.
The board is looking for, we're looking for a simple solution.
Yes, sir.
That, you know, something nice, pretty can be fenced in or whatever have you, whatever's deemed appropriate. And I think Commissioner Russell made a very good statement on that. But yeah, if you can add something like that, I know I would feel comfortable with this. I think something affordable like this, something definitely, you know, for our young professionals and, or just anyone who would want, have a desire to live in the community and neighborhood, I would be all for it. Is that something that you all think that you all can provide?
Yeah, I can commit to having either a solid plan for access for people if they're gonna have individual trash cans or a potential dumpster that might be shared by. But the dumpster would be just fully transparent, less, it would not be as easy to accommodate with. It's as easy to accommodate a dumpster as it would be a parking lot on that, because of the slope that come off that alley. But I will commit to making sure that we're dealing with trash in an appropriate way.
Mr. Chair, would it be prudent to ask, recommend a commission deferral so that the applicant can provide a more detailed site plan?
Yes.
To provide information regarding trash collection, how the site is being used more than what's been provided here today?
Are you asking if the applicant would like to make a?
I'm asking if you would like to recommend to the applicant that we do a commission deferral.
I'd rather not. These things give me anxiety. I mean, this isn't how, I'm not normally this shaky. I'd rather just have a vote tonight. Is it okay? I appreciate that.
So Commissioner Russell was basically saying you can defer to the next one if you like, to go back with staff, to go back and get it. That way, you're not.
I'd rather just commit to working with staff and trying to figure out trash and then move forward with this.
That would be a substantive change to the site plan.
That is, that is correct.
That staff cannot commit to without the commission.
So you can't, I can't commit to doing an HOA or POA for trash access through?
You need to see the revised site plan.
Mike, because you, it just depends on how you do it, because if you used one dumpster, you would have to screen that. How are you gonna?
Well, no, if there's five individual trash cans and there's just, you know, access, whether it is through people's fenced, you know, collectively fenced backyards, but they, there's just, it's written in the bill of assurance of sorts that people are allowed to have access to the street for use of their trash cans.
Because this is a PRD, you would have to have that as part of your application, because it becomes the zoning ordinance.
I can't imagine, I cannot imagine that not being true. So if you're gonna do a PRD?
That's correct.
I don't trust him either. I don't trust him either.
I think you can trust me.
Plan developments are site-specific, site-specific, so it does make a difference.
I mean, we can move forward and we can vote, but if it, if it doesn't get approved, and I don't know that, but if it doesn't get approved, then you have to go through the whole process versus deferring for one month.
So if it gets approved, and i-if it gets approved, like, I still have this trash problem. I still have to handle this. You're saying like, if this gets approved and I want to do a bill of assurance that would deal with the trash issue, I have to come back and explain to you guys how we're gonna get trash out? I have to ask for permission?
Technically, you would have to amend your PRD, yeah.
That's correct.
Really? So anybody, you could basically kill dang near anything in there if somebody doesn't come in with a trash can.
But it would be an amendment to the PRD, unfortunately, yes.
That's why the rules are in place. PRDs, they put everything on the table, and everything's open to negotiation, and you get a consensus with them. If that changes, you gotta come back and get a consensus again.
Yeah, so we're not talking about six months here or anything like that. It's literally thirty days.
Alright, as long as you guys make me, don't make me come back up here and talk again. Do we agree to that?
But Mike, if, Mike, if it is denied and you come back with the same application, you have to wait a year.
It's, yeah, no, I appreciate it. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. I appreciate it.
Amend the site plan, come back next month.
Yep, but to be clear, if it passes, if it did pass, there's no plan, there's no plan for trash. No kidding, yeah. Alright, I apologize. Yeah, we're gonna have to, we're gonna have to defer.
Alright, well, hold on a second, hold on a second. That can't be right. Our staff, are you saying that he has to show you where he's gonna sit a trash bin?
I just can't imagine, how many PRDs you have there? You could kill every PRD that came in here because no, I'm not gonna say no one, but like, that's.
Well, on commercial developments, we show a dumpster pad and it's, but I don't recall on any residential developments.
Commissioner Hart, let's see what staff had to say.
A trash can location.
Mr. Bowden, so as me and Mr. Moore are discussing this about him having to come defer and then this being a substantial change to the plan development. If he just did an easement in the back or anywhere on the property for this at the podium, is that a significant change enough for him to?
It's difficult because of, because of the PRD, right?
Right.
Because everything does have to be in there, like, I.
I think we're trained to say that, right?
I, I mean, I would say, obviously, you know, I would rather play it safe than take a risk. I mean, I would, I would rather the deferral happen and we figure it out than we have an issue down the road.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna point out, we had another residential development done by an architect where I had them defer because the dimension for the backyard was wrong. It was incorrect. And if we had approved that site plan, they would have been bound by the dimension that was on the site plan. And it was incorrect. So yes, it is substantial enough to require an accurate site plan.
Agreed. Alright, so we have staff made a statement, we had from our legal presence as well as our commissioner slash architect. At this pick of time, would you like to defer?
Yeah, I'm gonna, I'm gonna defer.
Okay, so applicant would like to defer on this, and we make a motion for deferment until next month, after he meet with staff one more time and get the easements and the solutions ready.
Yes, sir. Yeah, thanks, guys.
So I have a motion for that, for the applicant for deferment until next month. No, we have to make a motion. Yeah, I need a motion for that.
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion that we defer the matter Z-10128-A for next meeting, applicant's request.
Have a second?
Hold it, but it's a commission deferral, so the city pays for notices. Okay, amended at the commission's request.
You have a motion and a second here for deferral until next month at the commission request?
Do we get a second?
We have a second. Roll call vote, please.
Yes, sir. Commissioner, Commissioner Brown?
Yes.
Menard?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Hodges? McDonald?
Yes.
Person?
Aye.
Russell?
Aye.
Samad?
Yes.
Trimble?
Yay.
Baxter?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Application's been deferred until next week's, next month's meeting.
Thank you, gentlemen, and hopefully we can get this, get this corrected and put this on the consent agenda and get it done. Thank you very much for coming out. Alright, I see we have a public, public request to speak. Please come to the podium and state your name, please.
Good afternoon, gentlemen and ladies. Uh, my name is Sharon Jewell. Um, I just saw you, uh, vote to defer, um, the gentleman's Michael's off, uh, proposal. So I'll be back next month again to speak out against the, um, proposal. One, for the purpose of density, two.
I'm, I'm sorry, excuse me, I, I'm gonna stop you there.